Come all of you, हमारे इस regular thinking birthday session में और आज we are having special session on Krishna Janma Astmi So, welcome Vinodji And let us begin the session and we are happy to have a session with him It is the twenty-seventh session, so we feel blessed to have you Vinodji
My pleasure too Top mantra डाली screen पे?
Yes
Who will lead the mantra today?
Anyone else?
Can I do?
Yes, yes, why not?
नारायणम नमस्कृत्यम नरम चैवन नरोतमम देविम सरस्वतिम् व्यासम् ततो जयं मुदि रये
Very good, we can repeat now, नारायणम नमस्कृत्यम
नारायणम नमस्कृत्य
नरम चैवन नरोतमम देविम सरस्वतिम् व्यासम् ततो जयं मुदि रये
ततो जयं मुदि रये
Constellation?
Ravi
For reciting this Shrimad Bhagavatam, which is the very means of conquest one should offer respectful obeiances unto the personality of god Naraana unto Nara Naraana, the supermost human being, unto mother Saraswati, the goddess of learning and unto Srila Vyasa Deva, the author
Yes, so this is very important, you know, because Vyasa Deva is the one who compiled the whole Vedic literature and he wrote Shrimad Bhagavatam also So, we have to offer our obvious senses to the writer and compiler of the Vedic literature so that he can bless us to understand the sublime subject matter at the deep level Just a second So, today we are going to discuss about the appearance of Shri Krishna Jnana of Lord Shri Krishna So, can we start with the questions? Shakundaraji, you said that some people have some questions So, maybe we can start with those questions if they are relevant to today's topic
Is there, anyone from you, if you have any question, you can ask otherwise I'll read that question from the chat if you say I think that lady is not here, so I can read it from that
Yes, please, please go ahead
Yeah, yeah This is from Lina R. Trabu She says, "My understanding of Bhagwan Shri Krishna is that he is the human form of the source"
He is the human form of?
Of form of the source
Okay
Okay, but the source is also feminine, as she gives birth, so, and then question marks Shall I put it here on the chat or the question is?
You can, you can Yeah, for others also, you know, they can read
Okay One minute So, this is the question
He says, "My understanding", the question disappeared from the screen
It is there, in the chat, if you click on the chat
Yeah, this is a very common question people ask See, the thing is that when we talk about based on our limited understanding we think female form gives birth and that actually happens in the material world Material world, actually the living beings who are in the male form also they are also actually part of Prakruti Though they are in the male form of body, but originally speaking, they are the part and parcel of the Prakruti So, Prakruti is feminine and Purusha is only one, that is Krishna, Purushotama the supreme person, so he is the only one male being and others are part and parcel of the Prakruti, so everybody, even though the person may be in the male body apparently but that person also, the male person also apparently, who looks like that he also is the part and parcel of the Prakruti, so feminine energy So, one is the enjoyer, the other is the to be enjoyed So, we are the part and parcel of the Prakruti, so we are to be enjoyed We are not enjoyers, but what happens, you know, that our ego is so strong, we think that we are the enjoyers but actually that's not true and that can be seen in day-to-day life also, you know we feel more satisfaction when we do something for somebody instead of somebody doing for something for us, okay? Have you experienced that?
Yes, yes, very true
So, more satisfaction is when we do something for others, when we let others enjoy and we serve them So, when we serve others, that gives us more satisfaction than when we are served Right?
Right
So, that's the norm So, the Purusha is the enjoyer and we are part and parcel of the Prakruti, so we are to be enjoyed So, the original seed-giving father is Krishna, what he says in Bhagavad Gita He is the original seed-giving father for all living beings, not only for human beings, but everybody eight point four million different species of life So, for all species of life, the source of origin is Krishna Now Krishna expands himself in the feminine form So, first feminine form, the expansion of Krishna, that is Shrimati Radharani right, is the pleasure potency ladini shakti, that is joyful Because of the blessings of the blessings of Radharani, we feel joy in our life because she is the pleasure potency of Krishna So, for us to have proper understanding, Krishna does that you know, otherwise it is very difficult to comprehend that how a male person can beget, can give birth to other living beings If you have seen the picture of Mahavishnu or even if you have seen a picture of Naraana lying down on Ananta Shesha So, lotus sprouts from his navel, from his belly button and then on top of that lotus flower, Lord Brahma is sitting right? So, from that also, we can understand that the original father is Vishnu Krishna So, he is the male person, he is a Purusha, but still he can give birth in that way Brahma was born from the lotus flower, which sprouted from his navel, from his belly button right? So, this understanding, you know, the source is feminine or female, that is very limited understanding that happens only in the material world The seed from a male body cannot give birth to another living being unless it unites with an egg So, egg comes from a female body, so that arrangement is in the material world not so much in the spiritual world Correct? Any other question?
Yeah, Ravi has, Ravi would you like to ask?
Oh, I have asked this question Where does the thought of our relation that we share with Krishna comes from? Like for me, I see Krishna as my dearest, most friend and a neighbor in Goloka I always feel that I belong to that kingdom and I am here on a very temporary level and whenever I am frustrated, I just go to Krishna and tell him enough of this, I have learnt all the lessons now I am done, I don't want to learn anything, I am ready to go Why have you kept me stuck here? And you know, and this thought is inbuilt, I don't think that anybody thinks our quality wishes from outside it is very natural, somebody visualizes Krishna as their own child somebody would look at him as his father or Krishna as father So, I just want to understand where this thought comes from and if that thought is coming from somewhere else, which means then our body here is a very illusionary one it's not a permanent body, which means our existence is somewhere else actually So, this is what I want to understand from this question
Yes, very interesting point and you are very right, that you know, we are coming here, we come here for a temporary period of time Our original house is Golok Kriyavane and there we decide, we can decide if we go back in a spiritual form, which doesn't grow old doesn't get affected by any disease, no coronavirus in Golok Kriyavane right? No infection, no bacterial or virus infection there That happens only in this material world and that affects only our body, not our soul Our soul is not affected by all these kind of infections So, what you said, you know, you think your relationship with Krishna is like a friend So, majorly speaking, broadly speaking, there are five different types of rassas, we call them, the mellows So, these different kind of relationships living beings have with Krishna So, first one is Shantiabha, Shantiaras, very neutral right? Like Vidurahad, very neutral form And second one is Dasiyabha, that means servitorship, serving Krishna Third one is Sakhyabha, friendship Fourth one is Vatsalya, like parenthood Some people treat Krishna as a child, that is Vatsalyabha And the fifth one, the topmost, is the Gopibha, Maduryaras, conjugal love So, we may have connection with Krishna in any of these five different forms So, we need to realize that what kind of form which appeals to us the most Then we try to establish our relationship and strengthen that relationship with Krishna with that mood and Krishna will receive broken So, it's not coming from outside It may be, you know, you are bringing the memory, you know, from your previous lives So, when that memory sprouts in your mind, in your heart, then you start thinking in that way that you are related to Krishna in that way, as a friend So, there is nothing wrong in that, the one of the rassas, it is one of the rassas, Sakhyabha Does it answer your question, Raviji?
Yes, very much And I have this feeling from childhood only, it's not after I came into my real senses or something But this is like right from the childhood, this has been, this has been the thought with me from the very childhood only
Yes, so yeah, so you know, see, you might have done your sadhana in your previous lives with that mood and that mood is quite engraved in your heart, in your consciousness So, that's why in this lifetime also from childhood, you are having that kind of feeling, that kind of mood So, please hold on to that and Krishna will receive broken with you
That's been happening
Ah, yes, yes, as it happens See, you know, in the material world, we have so much of contamination, right? We are not so pure And Krishna knows that, we are not so pure But still, when we seek his support, his help, his blessing, he does that He doesn't hold himself back, thinking that, oh, we are not pure, so how, why should he help us? He doesn't think in that way
Yeah, he is always that
One of his names is Bhakta Vatsala Yeah, one of the names he arrenders itself for herself to Krishna Krishna thinks that now it is his responsibility to take care of that person So, Krishna focuses on that moment where the person surrenders to him in very certainty for him and Krishna being omniscient, he knows everything, he knows past, he knows our present and he knows our future also So, he knows our past lives, he knows what we might have done, you know, this stuff and even his life also in the past years And he knows that in future also, what kind of nonsense, correct? Krishna very well knows that now at this moment, though he is playing very sincerely and after I pull this person out from the physical situation, back to square one he will start doing on his nonsense things Is it okay?
Yeah, no
Yeah, it's fine, so, you know
There was some problem with the connection So, that's what I was saying, you know, Krishna focuses on the present moment He sees that this person, this individual needs my help now, so it is my responsibility, it is my duty to help him Now in future, whatever he does, that is up to him So, please, the point I want to make, please hold on to that kind of mood which you have So, when you hold on to that, make it stronger and stronger and eventually, when you go to the spiritual world, you will get that position as a friend Yes? Any other question?
Thank you, sir Thank you, sir
Hello?
Yes, I think there is no more question, you can
Okay, okay, so now we start the session today
Yes
First of all, now I want to ask a question Please don't hesitate if you have any answer Please share your realization Now, whether Krishna is incarnation of Vishnu or Vishnu is expansion of Krishna?
Now I know the answer
So, please
Let others try, I know, now I know the answer
Okay, good
So, we know it, we know it as Krishna being an incarnation of Vishnu only
Yes, that's what we have learnt, right, from childhood?
Yes, yes
But Vishnu is an expansion of Krishna
Krishna, yes
If you are regular with the Bhagavatam, you must be known
Anybody else wants to say something? Who else says that Krishna is incarnation of Vishnu?
Babita
We all learnt it like that, I think, even I feel that, I don't know, so let's hear the I really don't know But we have been given to understand and by reading, which, you know, incarnation
See, both, both statements are correct Both statements are correct, Krishna comes in every Dwapur yoga, right? So, all other Dwapur yogas, when Krishna comes, he comes as the incarnation of Lord Vishnu Only in this Dwapur yoga, that means this time, before this Kaluga, we had a Dwapur yoga So, this time only Krishna came himself from Golok Kriyavane Not as the incarnation of Vishnu In Brahmas, one day, in one day of Brahma, once Krishna comes himself So, we are very fortunate that we are in the Kaluga and before Kaluga, the Dwapur yoga was there and that Dwapur yoga Krishna himself came in this material world, on this earth planet So, we are very fortunate Right? So, both statements are right But as Shakundaraji was saying, that in Bhagavatam it is mentioned that Vishnu is expansion of Krishna and that also is not directly expansion of Krishna, he is expansion of expansion of expansion of Krishna So, you can imagine the supremacy of Krishna from that perspective, he is a supreme person So, now he appeared in Dwapur yoga on the eighth night of the Badra month during Krishna Paksha, right? According to the Vaishnava calendar, we call it Badra month and according to the people who follow the month from Amavasya to Amavasya, so that is Shraman month Correct? Now, whatever Krishna does
Yes
He doesn't do anything whimsically, impulsively, he is not like us Heat or the movement, we decide to do something, we do it without understanding what could be the consequences So, Krishna has proper plan, whatever he does, he does with proper planning and he covers so many points with one activity So, he appeared on the eighth day of the lunar cycle So, why did he choose eighth day of the lunar cycle? When in the previous incarnation, like Lord Ramachandra Lord Ramachandra appeared on the ninth day, right? Navami
Yes
We said Rama Navami, right?
Yeah
So, what's the difference between Navami and Ashrami?
Ashrami and Navami Navami is, this is in the dark, I think, Ashrami and Dheri me hu hai, Navami Ujale me
Of course, we get Ashrami, Navami both in the vexing moon nights and the moon nights Sukla Paksha, Sukla Paksha, so Lord Ramachandra appeared Sukla Paksha, Navami And Krishna appeared in the Krishna Paksha Yeah, but my question was, what is the difference between Ashrami and Navami? Not between Krishna Paksha and Sukla Paksha?
Ashrami, generally I have heard they don't do any good work, that's all I know Everything good, they don't start
Ashrami is a very auspicious, Radha, Radhaji also was
I don't know, from in south probably, they say it's raised, Ashrami don't start, something like that they used to tell
Yeah, normally, normally according to the Karma Kanda system Some auspicious activities, they don't perform on the Ashrami day
Yeah
Yeah
So, that's all I know, nothing about
Yeah Radhaji's birth also, we celebrate on Ashrami, Radha Ashrami
Yes, after fifteen days of Krishna, Radhaji appeared and that she appeared on the Ashrami of Sukla Paksha
Sukla Paksha
Bright fortnight So, now see, if you read the table of nine, nine is a very complete number
Hmm, yes
Right? Nine ones are nine, then nine twos are eighteen, eight plus one is nine Nine threes are twenty-seven, two plus seven is nine
Nine, oh
Nine fours are thirty-six, three and six nine
Nine
Right? So, if you read the whole table of nine, the sum total of the result is always nine
Oh, wow
So, that's why Lord Ramachandra is called Mariyada Purushotama, he never broke any principles, he never crossed his limits, his boundaries Like number nine doesn't cross any boundary, right? Always remains nine
Oh, that is a very nice explanation
Yeah? And if you read the table of eight, see what happens when you read the table of eight
Eight sixteen
If you read the table of eight, it will go on reducing, the sum total will go on reducing
Reducing, twenty-four and six, less and less, right?
All the way up to nine Nine eights are
Seventy-two
Seventy-two, seven plus two is nine
Nine
Correct? So, this is kind of one, some analogy Vaishnavas gave So, you know, when you start worshipping Krishna, Krishna normally does that Many times you see Krishna's devotees, they get so much of setback in the material life Some people, they lose their business, they incur so many financial losses Sometimes their relationships are spoiled with other family members, relatives The relatives abandon them, isolate them So, these kind of things happen with Krishna devotees But still, if someone still holds on to Krishna's feet with form, determination, conviction So, it comes to the stage when his life becomes complete like number nine And when that kind of thing happens, another analogy is given that the person who serves Krishna, controlling his nine gates, keeping his nine gates pure that person's life can become complete like number nine You know, in one of the sessions, we talked about nine gates we have in our body
And as per Panchanga also, Ashrami is ruled by Rahu and Navami is ruled by sun as per Panchanga
Okay, okay So, my question earlier was, does anyone remember about the nine gates in our body?
Yes
What Krishna says in Bhagavad What are the nine gates?
Eyes, ears, eyes, ears, mouth
Two eyes, two ears, four, two nostrils, six
Six, one mouth
Seven
Panel
NS eight
And
And then
One more
Genitals, right? Or for urination
Genitals, genital
Nine, correct? So, these are nine gates, so the person who safeguards his soul, his intelligence from these nine gates because different robbers, different thieves, decoys, vices, they attack us they try to enter into our body through these nine gates So, the person who safeguards these nine gates, that person's soul can remain happy in this fort, Krishna gives a, he uses a word fort of a body as a city Right? So, then that person's life becomes complete and that completeness can be maintained like number nine And that person gets unlimited happiness in life, bliss in his life So, these are different analogies, you know, some Vaishnavas, some devotees, they do why Krishna appeared on the eighth day, and it is said that on the eighth day normally, the moon is half only half moon is visible from the earth planet Right? Aastamika chand, dono o re hai aata
Yes
Is both sides half, on the earth planet side also half, heavenly planets also heavenly planet side also is half But it is said, you know, when Krishna appeared on the Ashrami day, the moon looked like a full moon, Urnima Increase in size So, why did moon increase in size?
Bhagwan ke darsan ke liye chandrama aaye
To jabi a di thi, to darsan nahi kar sate thi kya?
Unko naa karne thi, to
The perfect balance of good and bad, perfect balance of darkness and lightness and kind of, it shows like a balance and infinite infinity in itself So, I believe it has got more to do with, you know, striking a perfect balance between the good and the bad This is what I feel, okay? So, he is actually very much away from all this So, but he is trying to, you know, portray that it's a perfect balance of things and also the darkest of the night, because Krishna himself loves I have, I don't know how it has, you know, come to me, but Krishna loves like storms I know that he loves storms, thunderstorms, like rains and all and he loved like most of that, you know, Shama Varana, so lot of evening, that's how we call him Sham So, because of the evening that, you know, you know, the mega, the whole sky full of dark clouds So because of the evening that he, you know, you know, the mega, the whole sky full of dark clouds. And that is when he, he wanted to be, you know, come to this planet, mother earth and that is the, the kind of atmosphere he created. When the sky was at most of the darkest and it was like, you know, blue lightning happening and that is when the, the lord appeared.
Yeah, somebody else say.
No, that was some restorments, I muted them.
So I, I believe that is like a silver lining the lord gave like, you know, in the darkest most hour, I am always there to help. So this is what I, I feel, this is what I think.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Do you know who likes the darkness?
One who can remove it.
No, no, who likes, who likes the darkness? What kind of person waits for the sun to set so that his activities can be performed?
Evil spirits.
Yogis, yogis.
Those who want to get into Dhyana and they don't want to be disturbed.
Yogis.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a different matter, yogis also, yes, you are right, but you know, from the, from the layman's perspective, you say the thieves, the robbers, decoys. Krishna is the biggest thief, right?
Yes.
So that's why he chose to be, to appear in the dark night. Now see, this is like a, on a lighter way, we can say that he's a thief. But actually, the meaning of Krishna kashate jiva chittam ethik Krishna. Jo jeev ke chitko karshan karta hai, the person who attracts, not the hearts, the consciousness of all living beings. Kashate jiva chittam ethik Krishna. See now here it doesn't say that, kashate manav chittam, kashate deva chittam, kashate pashu chittam, no, kashate jiva chittam. All living beings. Whether they are moving or non-moving. Even the plants, trees, they also get attracted by Krishna's beauty, when Krishna plays flute, the trees also start dancing. So, if I could say, chit chor hai, sabka chit chura leta hai. Or choron ko to raatri bati hai. Correct? The thieves, they like the nighttime. So, but Krishna was, they say that, you know, actually they are very high class devotees, they can talk about Krishna in that way, we cannot, we should not imitate in that way. So they give this kind of reasons, you know, why Krishna appeared in the middle of the night. And then, what was his complexion? How did he look?
That was.
Shamburn, shamburn.
Shamburn Krishna.
Megavarnam.
Okay.
Megavarnam.
That means the, the monsoon cloud, which is full of water. So the cloud looks a bit grayish color, right? The clouds which are filled with water, they look a bit grayish, correct? So Krishna's complexion also was like that. So it is said though his complexion is, is a bit grayish, but he is the one with his knowledge, he can remove all the gray areas of people's life. Whatever foggy feeling we have, whatever confusion we have, no matter how cloudy, cloudy we feel at our mental level. But if we try to understand Krishna's instructions he has given in the book of wisdom, Bhagavad Gita, when we try to understand those locas, whatever confusion we have, dilemma we have that can be removed by understanding those locas, so that is Krishna, though his appearance, his complexion his color is slightly gray, but he can remove all the gray areas of people's lives, his devotees' lives. No more confusion, no more dilemma. Right? Then you can think straight, you can be very firm in your decision. No more confusion and that's what had happened with Arjuna. In the beginning of the war, Arjuna felt so confused whether he should fight or not. But after Krishna gave him the knowledge, sublime knowledge, all, in English what we say, all blues disappear. All confusion vanished. And Arjuna became confident to fight. Correct? Coming back to that moon part, the moon, the size of the moon increased because, you know, Lord Ramachandra appeared in the Surya Vamsha. Correct?
Yes.
And Krishna appeared in the Chandra Vamsha, lunar dynasty. So when the moon god saw Krishna appearing in his dynasty, he felt so proud, he felt so happy. And because of happiness, his size increased. Kete ke hamare jo hamari short ho to iske button toot jaate hain. Kisi ke vaks, 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 button tootte, kisi ke peet ke vaks, button tootte hain. Prasannata ke marre shari pool jata hai. When we feel happy, our body size, we feel that, our body size increases, size increases and we feel, feel anxious, depressed. Then automatically we feel our body shrinking. Correct? So the moon god felt so happy that Krishna appeared in his clan, in his dynasty. And because of that happiness, though he was half in size in the beginning, on the eighth day of the lunar cycle. But when Krishna appeared, when he saw Krishna, he felt so happy, then his size increased like the full moon. Low battle teeth. Does it sound logical?
Yes, yes.
Sorry?
Very nice. Yes, very nice.
You know, it is said that when Lord Ramachandra appeared, when he decided to appear in the solar dynasty, sun dynasty, moon god became a bit upset, disappointed. So Lord Ramachandra looked at him and asked, you know, why are you so disappointed? Killed Lord Vishnu. So moon god said, you know, you are going to incarnate on the earth planet in Thita Yoga, but in the solar dynasty. So that means people will, the sun god already is so famous and he is so powerful. Now when you appear in his dynasty, so his worship will increase, what about me? So Lord, Lord Vishnu told him that, you know, no matter if I appear in his dynasty or not, even if I appear in his dynasty, but still after my name, your name will be added, people will call Ramachandra, not Ramasuraya.
Nice.
But still, still moon god was not so much happy, not so satisfied. So then Lord Vishnu told him, okay, next time when I come is Krishna, in Dhappur Yoga, I will appear in your dynasty. Then moon god was satisfied, pacified. So these are small humorous pastimes, you know, which are mentioned in different scriptures. Now this Vyasa Dev has included these kind of instances in the scriptures for the benefit of people like us, because we are not advanced yogis, for advanced rishis. We cannot understand Krishna so well. So for our benefit, Vyasa Dev has included all these different pastimes. So that we can relate to the lelas of Krishna and Lord Ramachandra. Right? So now coming back to this Krishna's time. I want to share with you, you might have got that viral message either this year or the previous years. During these kind of times, you know, Krishna Janmasmi or Ramachandras, Janma, Usva, Ramanami. These kind of messages has become very viral. So one message recently I received, in which it was mentioned that when Krishna went to Mathura, after he killed Kamsa, he went to the prison house to release his parents, Vasudev and Devaki. So Devaki asked them, you know, why did it take so long for you to come to release us? Fourteen years since your birth. Why didn't you come earlier? Has anyone received such message before? Anyone? Yes or no?
No. Kike, who, Kekai, Nairam Chandrji ko, who choda vash ka unavas diya tha, to is vajse link kiya tha isko.
Ah, ah, yes.
Nandji, to ishliye onone koshal ya vo bani yashoda and Kekai is Devki.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so these kind of, you know, messages, people, they, they spread, they share with others. But actually, this is completely wrong. When we read these kind of messages, you know, they can, they can sound nice at the mental level. But at intellectual level, if you try to understand what is the actual reason, then we feel very sorry for such people who make such messages. They are very shallow people, they are, they are mental speculation. Nowhere in the scriptures it is mentioned that Devaki was Kekai in a, in a previous life and mother Yashoda was Kausala in a previous life, no. Do you know the previous lelas of Krishna's parents? Who were Devaki and Vasudev and who were Yashoda and Nanda Maharaj in their previous lives?
No.
Anyone can share?
No.
Long time ago, in one session, we discussed who were Devaki and Vasudev in their previous life and Yashoda, Nanda Maharaj.
Don't remember, I have read it but don't remember. Har vision nahi kiya, I don't remember.
So first I will tell you about Nanda Maharaj and Yashoda, they were Dharan and Drona in their previous lives. And they worshipped Krishna as in Golo Krendavan and they took care of the cows, they worshipped cows, they served cows also very much. And that's why Krishna chose to be their son. Dharan, Drona. And Vasudev and Devaki, this was not the first time Krishna appeared as his son, this was the third time Krishna appeared as his son. Because, see now we are in the seventh Manmantara, Vayavishwata Manmantara. In Brahmas one day, there are fourteen Manus, fourteen Manmantaras. So we are on the seventh Manmantara, so this is like a midday time for Lord Brahma, half day is gone. So, in the first Manmantara, Swayam Bhuman, Manmantara. Sutapa and Krishni. Sutapa was Prajapati at that time and Krishni was his wife. So they got the orders from Lord Vishnu and Brahma to engage in the activities of procreation, produce children. So Sutapa knew very well that the original father is Lord Vishnu himself. So he and his wife, they did austerity Tapasya to please Lord Vishnu and Lord Vishnu appeared in front of them. After several thousands and thousands of years of Tapasya, Lord Vishnu appeared in front of them. And as you know, what kind of benediction he could give them. So they said that they wanted a son like him. They felt so excited when they saw Lord Vishnu, Chaturbhuja form, with corn shell, club, Sudashan chakra and lotus flower in his hands. And very bluish complexion, very beautiful complexion. So they felt very excited, so when Lord Vishnu asked them for benedictions, to ask for benedictions, boon. So because of excitement, they repeated twice, we want a son like you, we want a son like you, we want a son like you. So Lord Vishnu told them, you know, there is no one who is like me. So I will become your son three times, because you asked for three times, so in three births, I will become your son. So the first time in that same Swayam Bhuman Mantra, Lord Vishnu appeared as his son with the name of Krishni Garba, Krishni was Sutapa's wife, so he took birth from her womb, Garba, so his name was Krishni Garba. And this form is believed that appeared in front of Druva Maharaj, when Druva Maharaj was doing austerity in the forest. So Krishni Garba form of Lord Vishnu gave him darsan in the forest. So that was first time Krishna appeared as his son, second time was in this, this seventh Manmantara, but in in the Sandhi of Satya Yoga and Tritha Yoga. Lord appeared as the son of Kasyapumuni and Aditi. So in the second birth, Sutapa and Krishni, they became Kasyapumuni and Aditi. And Krishna appeared as his son in the form of Vamanadev, dwarf incarnation. To make the three steps, steps of land from Bali Maharaj. Does anyone know that Leela, Vamanaleela?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can you share?
So Vamanah appears when the tapa, actually the yagna was getting over and the Bali Maharaj was about to win over the Devatas, Deva Lokas also. So the lord appears in the form of Vamanah, along with a small umbrella on his head and like a very dwarf. And he comes and asks him that I want only three, three pug of bhoomi, that is three feet of bhoomi for his, you know, practice, spiritual practices. So the Bali Maharaj at very first glance of the lord was totally taken away, I mean, he, he was like totally into the lord's mercy and he agreed. Towards which Shukracharya, his guru, he, he came in between and he told him not to do it. Because he said he is Vishnu in disguise and you shortly, you will be, become Lakshmi. So, but, but the Lord Bali Maharaj would say, no, it's okay, even if I have to give something to the creator of this universe. Who, who would be better off, you know, giving to the creator himself. So finally he takes the patra and he tries to pour water in his hand as anjali, but it won't come out. Then Lord Vamanah himself, it poke from his umbrella, he'll take out a prick and he'll poke into that and that's how Shukracharya would lose one eye. And finally the water comes out and Raja Bali then gives to the Vamanah, the sankalp of, three pug bhoomis. And then lord immediately took the biggest form and with one feet, he covered the whole earth. The second reached upstairs to the Akasha Ganga where Lord Brahma himself washed the feet of the lord. And that's how the Ganges, you know, came to existence. And the third feet, the lord asked now where should I keep my third feet upon? Towards which Bali Maharaj said, it is, he, he kneeled down in front of the lord and he said, it's on my head, you can keep it. And I want to fulfill my promise, towards which lord said that, okay, I will be now making you the king of Patalaloka. And I shall stay to your rescue for four months, like, this, this was ultimately decided. From Devashani Amavasya to a period wherein four months lord stays with Maharaja Bali. Because apparently Lakshmi becomes sister of Bali the moment he gets into the Pataloka. And this is how the Puranas, I, I will call it history, I won't call it mythology, this is how the history is.
Mythology at all, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, it's the history, yeah, it's the history. So most of us confused because we, we, you know, most of the times we say it as mythology. So I tell all my friends, never to call it as mythology, this all has happened and it's very much history, it's our past.
Yes, yes, good for you.
So, so this is how, and there's a very old song which used to come in Hindi movies. Tera hoga bada aasan, I would love to listen to that song in my childhood even now sometimes. And like Jagat ka palan hara tere pasi ake mang raha hai.
Correct, correct.
All that, so, it is very, very, you know, the whole experience is like very, very real for me.
Yeah, you are totally right, yes, so see, thank you, thank you for sharing the whole pastime, you narrated very well. So yes, Vamanadev went to Bali Maharaj, now Bali Maharaj, he already had conquered the heavenly planets. So when he attacked the heavenly planets, because that also because of the boon of the, the Brahmanas from the so when he attacked the heavenly planets because that also because of the boon of the the Brahmanas from the Brugu dynasty they did the yagna and they gave Bali Maharaj the chariot bow arrows everything uncounterable undefeatable so with that Bali Maharaj went and he attacked the heavenly planets so at that time all the demi gods they went to to their guru Briaspati asking you know what should we do so Briaspati said you know I am also confused I I wonder you know how these demons have they become so powerful so they went to Lord Brahma and with Brahma they went to the shore of the ocean or milk of ocean they prayed to Lord Vishnu Narayana so Akashwani came that at this point of time demi gods they should not counter attack the demons because demons are very powerful Lord himself will appear in the form of Vamanah and he will get kingdom from Bali Maharaj and give it back to Lord Indra so Lord Vishnu told them that don't fight with them now they are very powerful now so Bali Maharaj became the king of the heavenly planets also but then his guru Shukrajacharya told them now to be seated to maintain that kingdom Bali Maharaj had to do the hundred achopeda yogyas which will purify him which will qualify him to remain the king of the heavenly planets eternally as long as he alive alive so then Bali Maharaj wanted to do this hundred achopeda yogyas so when he completed ninety nine yogyas when he was doing the hundredth yagiya at that time Vamanadev appeared he came at the arena where the yagiya was being performed so it was a very small size dwarf Vamanah pygmy size Ramana but he was looking very effulgent so when Bali Maharaj saw him Bali Maharaj got up from his seat and welcomed him and then asked him you know what what I what can I do for you so that Ramana said I want only three steps of land so Bali Maharaj laughed he told him you are so tiny and you take three steps measure the land equivalent to your three steps the piece of land will be very small I own the whole heavenly planets I own the earth planet if you ask me to give you one planet I can give you one planet you are all asking only for three steps so Vamanadev because he was in the form of Brahmana so he told him what to speak of Brahmana but for any human being it is not good to be greedy greed is the cause of sinful activities so I will be very satisfied just if you give me three steps of land so Bali Maharaj wanted to do the sankalpa taking a vow okay I take a vow you know before we do any kind of ceremony we do a sankalpa right so Bali Maharaj wanted to take that water from the pot to do the sankalpa so at that time Shukrajacharya stopped him Shukrajacharya stopped him and told him you know don't do this you don't know this person he is Lord Vishnu himself and he has come in the form of a dwarf Brahmana once you take a sankalpa he will increase his body his body will become very big very gigantic and in one step he will measure the whole earth planet in the second step he will measure all the upper heavenly planets then there won't be any area left any space left for him to put his third step then what will you do so if you break your promise and for breaking the promise that offense he will arrest you and he will push you to lower planets so Bali Maharaj said that whoever he may be now he has come in the form of Brahmana and I have taken a vow I will give him that whatever he is asking for I am Akshatriya so it is my duty to fulfill my promise so as you said you know that Shukrajacharya went inside in the small form inside that kavandal so when Bali Maharaj started pouring the water so that hole was stopped by Shukrajacharya so Vamanadev knew already so Vamanadev took a straw and poke inside that pot so that the water can flow that blockage can be removed and that broke the eye one eye of Shukrajacharya so he said you know Vamanadev made Shukrajacharya give him one vision neutral vision be equal to everyone don't be partial and believe this Shukrajacharya was stopping Bali Maharaj from giving taking that vow and giving in charity three steps of land because Shukrajacharya very well knew that Bali Maharaj will be bereft of all wealth because Vamanadev will take away everything from him then what will happen to Shukrajacharya was depending on Bali Maharaj so Shukrajacharya was more concerned about himself that who will maintain him if Bali Maharaj is becomes poor poverty stricken everything will be taken by Vamanadev so who will take care of Shukrajacharya so Shukrajacharya was more concerned about him about himself so Vamanadev realized that and he poked that straw inside and then he broke one eye of Shukrajacharya made him with one vision so yes so that is Leela and as you said you know that in one step after Shukrajacharya sorry Bali Maharaj took the vow Vamanadev increased his body in size gigantic form his head could not be seen Bali Maharaj also was surprised so with one step when he took one step he measured he covered the whole earth planet and step and step he extended all the way to Mahatatwa the layer of water which is between the spiritual wall and the material wall so with his toe left big toe he made a hole in that Mahatatwa the layer of water spiritual water Hare Krishna so that water from that hole fell from the Mahatatwa from the spiritual wall and that water was collected in the kavandal by Lord Brahma and that is Ganges water so Ganges water is not from the material wall it is not only flowing from Himalayas it is coming from the spiritual wall and that is the reason you know in one of the sessions we talked about it and I mentioned that scientists they have tried to check the Ganges water in laboratory several times they have collected samples of Ganges water from the filthiest place very dirty place and when they checked in the laboratory they could not find a single bacteria single germ in that they added some bacteria in the sample of Ganges water within few seconds all the bacteria they died bacteria could not survive in the Ganges water though the water apparently was looking very dirty so they could not understand the scientists could not understand the potency of the water what is so special about this water because this water is coming from the spiritual world normally any water if you collect from anywhere any any river on the earth planet that water if you store in a bottle after some time you will see some foam forming in the water that water doesn't remain drinkable after some time we to throw it that what we to discard that but Ganges water is so unique no matter how many years you store it it will remain intact it will still remain pure you will never find any bacteria even if you kept the Ganges water for years and years in the water that water will still remain pure if it contains yes yes please
when I am having it from last five years in the in the plastic bottles only but it is very pure
yeah it remains pure because it is coming from the spiritual world Mahatatwa right so that is because of Vamanadev then Vamanadev did not any space left to keep his put his third step so Bali Maharaj said you put it on my head and Vamanadev told him since you broke your promise and for Akshatriya to break a promise is a big office big crime so you will be punished for that so Vamanadev arrested him and pushed him to the Patalaloka but he told them that that Patalaloka will be protected by Lord Vishnu Sudashan chakra so there is no sunshine there sun doesn't reach there sunshine doesn't reach there but it is brighter than the sun planet because it is protected by the Sudashan chakra and Sudashan chakra is much much more millions and millions of times more powerful than the sun planet so this is the blessing of Lord Vamanadev to Bali Maharaj yes anybody any friends do you want to say something you need to unmute yourself if you want to say something
okay no question
I think our audio is not
no 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 she has unmuted so I think that was just little
okay so that was the second birth second time Vishnu became the son of Kasyapu Muni and Aditi and third time that Sutapa and Krishni they became Devaki and Vasudev Vasudev and Devaki and Krishna appeared himself as a son so these are the three words which are mentioned in Shrimad Bhagavatam so it is not that you know that K K was I mean K K became Devaki and Kausala became Yashoda and Ramachandra became Krishna like that not not like that it is not connected in that way so we need to have proper understanding about the pastimes of Krishna then you know when anybody with mental speculation sends these kind of messages then we need to correct that person that person's intention may not be bad but it is lack of knowledge so we need to be very careful we should not endorse such messages and we should not share such messages right so Krishna became the son of Vasudev and Devaki now when he appeared it is said that he appeared in the Vishnu form four arm forms because Devaki was very scared very anxious what will happen to to her child when Kamsa comes to know that Abhiv is born so to remove that fear from the heart of Devaki Krishna appeared in the Chaturbhu form Lord Vishnu form to remind them that you know this is not the first time I have become your son this is the third time in the beginning of the creation soyambhumanu time first manmanthara of this day of Lord Brahma you did austerity you pleased me I was so happy with your austerity at that time you were Sutapa and Krishni and I appeared as your son as Krishni Garba and second time you became Kasyapu Muni and Aditi and I became your son in the form of Vamanadev and this is the third time you have become Vasudev and Devaki and I have come as your son as Krishna so you should not fear you should not have any fear Kansa cannot do anything to me right so Krishna appeared as the the son of Vasudev and Devaki now if we read Krishna's pastimes there are so many contradictions so many contradictions you know it is said that not only Krishna when he stands his body is crooked like Tribanga Tribanga his knee is bent his ankle is bent and his neck also is bent right or sometimes they say knee waist and the neck his body is bent from three parts that's why it's called as Tribanga so not only his body is crooked but his personality is also very very crooked on one hand he will say something on the other end he will say completely opposite that's why they said you know one should never follow never try to follow Krishna's footsteps never you will get into get yourself into trouble Krishna's instructions are to be followed and Lord Ramachandra's footsteps are to be followed Ramachandra's life is to be followed and Krishna's instructions are to be followed so some examples I want to share with you the the contrast in his character now when Krishna went to study in the Gurukul in the ashram of Santipani Muni he learned forty sixty four different subjects different kallas in sixty four days of course Krishna is you know omniscient he knows everything but still he wanted to set an example as a disciple in the human form how a disciple should behave when he staying in the Gurukul ashram of his guru so after he completed his course sixty four days then as Guru Dakshina he brought his gurus son back which actually his guru thought that he he lost his son his son died but actually he did not die a demon had taken him away so Krishna went there and he brought his son back his guru's son back so he relieved his guru from his grief which he was suffering due to the separation from his son right and on the other hand on the battlefield of Kurukshetra he is instigating Arjunah to kill his guru see the contrast contradictory right Arjun asked him you know can you imagine killing your own guru Sandipani Muni so Krishna said there is so much difference between Sandipani Muni and Dronacharya Dronacharya is an obstacle on the path of Dharma on establishing Dharma so that obstacle is to be removed and see what what Krishna did Krishna knew very well as long as Dronacharya has any weapon in his hands nobody can defeat him nobody can kill him so some trick is to be played so that Dronacharya himself gives up the weapons and Dronacharya was very much attached to his son Ashwathama so Krishna told Pandabhas you need to create a situation where you make Dronacharya believe that his son is killed on the battlefield so because of that grief of separation from his son he will give up all the weapons then he can be killed so Pandabhas they were very reluctant to do that so Krishna told Bima you know you will not be able to say that Ashwathama is killed so maybe you kill the elephant whose name is Ashwathama and then you can go and tell Dronacharya that Ashwathama is killed you killed Ashwathama and Bima did that with his one blow of his club mace he killed big elephant huge elephant his name was Ashwathama and then after that he went in front of Dronacharya and told him that I killed Ashwathama today Dronacharya could not believe him now see how Krishna does these things Ashwathama had the boon of immortality nobody could kill him he won't die and Dronacharya knew variable but Krishna sitting in everybody's heart as paramatma he twisted he stole Dronacharya's intelligence and Dronacharya also believed that Bima killed Ashwathama but still to make sure he went in front of Yudhistir Maharaj Yudhistir to ask him whether it was true that Bima killed Ashwathama so when Krishna saw Dronacharya approaching Maharaj Yudhistir so he told Maharaj Yudhistir when Dronacharya asks you whether it is true or not you say you tell him yes it is true Bima killed Ashwathama so when Dronacharya went in front of Maharaj Yudhistir so Maharaj Yudhistir was also was also very reluctant to lie to his guru it is said that Maharaj Yudhistir's chariot would not touch the ground the the four wheels of his chariot would always remain higher four few inches higher than the ground because of his honesty his piety his purity so it is said that after this incident when Maharaj Yudhistir told Dronacharya yes Ashwathama is killed by Bima his chariot came down to the ground so apparently it is said that you know because he lied to his guru his chariot came down but actually that is not true our guru his only name is Samal Krishna Goswami Maharaj he explained the actual reason behind Maharaj Yudhistir's chariot coming down on the ground because when Krishna told Maharaj Yudhistir to lie to his guru Maharaj Yudhistir was very very reluctant very hesitant he did not want to do that He did not want to do that. But when he spoke like that, yes, Bima killed Ashwathama. Then he said, not a man, but, but an elephant. So when he spoke those words at that time, Krishna blew his conch shell. So what Maharaj Yudhistir said, his words, Dronacharya could not hear. Because they were covered by the sound from the conch shell. See how Krishna does things, very cunning, right? All these, these things Krishna does to uphold the Dharma. So because Maharaj Yudhistir was reluctant to follow the instructions from absolute truth. Maharaj Yudhistir was holding the honesty, the material honesty, the social honesty, morality. But Krishna told him that, you know. The, the topmost thing is the spirituality. Dharma is a topmost. Not to uphold Dharma, if you need to lie also sometimes, you should do it. So because of that hesitation, Maharaj Yudhistir showed, because of that reluctance, his chariot came down to the ground. Not because he lied to his guru. You know, absolute truth is telling him to lie and he was holding on to his personal truthfulness. So because of that, that reluctance, that his chariot came down to the ground. So this is one contradictory thing. Right? And it is said, you know Krishna, whenever he was asked any question, he would not give a straight answer. He would make the person who is asking question very, very confused, very bewildered. Like you know, for example, when he went to. To get Rukmini from her kingdom, when Rukmini wrote a letter to him, so Krishna went there. So when Rukmini. Was, when, when she saw and she wanted to run away, hello with Krishna, so Rukmini asked him a question. Krishna from Dwarka, all they were from Dwarka. You came alone? Now it's a straight question, right? So Krishna could say, yes, I came alone. My, my army is there, but you know, they are busy fighting with your brother, Rukmini. Krishna told him. If you come on my chariot. I won't remain alone anymore. That kind of answer he gave. So Rukmini also was confused, what is he saying? So this is what Krishna does. Actually, you know, if you see that if you go to Vrindavan, generally, bridge vasys also they speak like that. Because it is in their DNA, not to be straightforward. Original bridge vasys, not, not people who have migrated there from other places. Original bridge vasys are like that. For example. If any bridge was he calls you now, you know, if we call someone, what we do, the first thing we do. What do we now want to do? If we call someone, what do we do? We introduce ourselves, right? I am this and this person and who am I talking to? Bridge vasys will do, will do the opposite. They, they will call you and ask you, who are you? They will, then you make it up that you know, you are calling me, first you introduce yourself, no? They will not introduce themselves first. They will ask you, who are you? So this is the way Krishna also does. It is coming from Krishna. Bridge vasys, they behave like Krishna in that way. And from childhood Krishna would always lie, generally. Right? When he used to steal butter, mother Yasoda will catch him. And ask him, have you stolen butter? Have you eaten butter? Now butter is in, on his hands, on his face. Still blatantly Krishna will say, no. I did not steal butter, I did not eat butter. Right? There is very nice bhajan by Surudas. Maya mori maya nih maakan khayo. Right? Have you heard that?
Yes, yes.
Right? In the whole, the whole bhajan, he is saying maya nih maakan khayo, maya nih maakan khayo. And at the end, when Yasodhama gives up, then she also agrees, yes, yes, you did not eat. They changed the words. May nahi maakan khayo. I am the one who ate butter.
Oh. Yes, yes.
Sorry? Apko kuchh kahna hai? So yeah, this is the way Krishna does. He killed many demons. Right? He was very powerful. Even when Akurura went to. Went with the invitation from Kamsa to bring him to Mathura, so that Kamsa could make, get Krishna killed. By Chanur and Krishna and Balram both killed by Charan and Mustika. And Krishna killed Chanura and I think Balram killed Mustika. Both of them, they fought with those very professional, very experienced, very strong wrestlers. So Krishna knew how to. Do wrestling also. But when it came to. Killing of Jara Sanda, he did not wrestle with Jara Sanda. He asked Bima to fight with him. So to increase Bima's credit, to make Bima very famous. So Krishna does that also. You know, sometimes he, to enhance. The fame of his devotees, Krishna puts himself behind the curtain. And he pushes his devotee in front. And some, many times it has happened to uphold the words of his devotees, Krishna can break his own promise. Does anyone know that what promise, what, what vow, what pratitya Krishna took before the Bharata War began?
He said. Main shastre nahi uthaunga, ye promise kiya tha.
Correct.
Or phir.
So he did that.
Phir woh hi toora, toorna bada, woh utha, utaya tha, jab khush hui the woh.
Anka paya ko hi chakra bana liya tha unhone ne aur kaha tha ki, ajja, Arjun. Aaj mere bagatne puchha hai ki, aaj main bhagwan ka bagat nahi hunga, jo bhagwan ko main aaj shastre utane pe mazboor nahi kar do. So in a way he protected even Bishma's pratitya also. So he broke his pratitya and he honored Bishma Pitamas pratitya to honor him and he, he was like. That's the beauty, you know, like lord is so omnipresent everywhere. That we sometimes with our limited personality, we fail to read that. And that, at the end, when things are open, then we say, okay, ye isliye huwa tha. Or you know, that's, that's when we. Sakshatkar, this is, I am, Satya says sakshatkar.
Correct, correct. Yes, very true. You know, with the beginning of the war. Krishna said that I will not carry, I will not take any weapons in my hands and I will not fight. So when Bishma heard his pratitya, his vow, his sankalpa, so Bishma also said, I will compel you. I will force you to take weapons in your hands and fight. So when Krishna saw that Arjuna was not fighting wholeheartedly, because he had that emotional sentiments, attachment. For his great-grandfather Bishma. So then Krishna jumped from his chariot and he picked up. A wheel from a broken chariot and used this as a sudashan chakka. And went to attack Bishma Dev and Bishma Dev was so happy. Bishma Dev gave up all his weapons. He said, this is the moment I was waiting for, you know, if I can get killed by you, definitely I will get moksha, moksha, mokti. And he told Krishna, I'm, I want to remind you, you know, you took a vow in the beginning of the war, that you will not fight, you will not carry any weapon. So Krishna said, I am not fighting. I am not carrying any weapon. So Bishma said, you know, you are not having weapon in your hand. So Krishna said, you know, it seems that you have become very old, you cannot see properly. Your vision is affected. I don't have any weapon. It's the wheel of a broken chariot. How can you say it's a, it's a weapon? So Bishma told him that, you know, from the archery point of view, from the martial arts point of view. Any object if you use. To attack or to defend yourself, that object can be treated as a weapon. So Krishna said, that is according to your logic. It seems that you have forgotten logic also. And Krishna told him that you learn logic from Guruspati, Guru Guruspati in the heavenly planets. It seems you need to go back to him to learn logic again. This is what kind of logic are you giving that is a, is a, a wheel of a broken chariot, how can you call it as a weapon? So in this way, there was some kind of humorous conversation between Lord Krishna and Bishma Dev. But eventually Krishna told him. That you know, because you also took a vow, that it will compel me to, to take a weapon and fight. So for me. Your vow is more important than my own vow. So I want to safeguard your vow. I want to protect your reputation. And that's why I had to fight. I had to just pretend to that I am, I am fighting. I am pretending like that. So yes, Krishna is like that, you know, to uphold the words, the vow of his devotees, Krishna can break his promise. So actually there are so many pastimes. We can go on and on. And of course, you know, when we, when we come, it will take quite a bit of time. When we start discussing about Krishna's actual pastimes in detail, when we talk from, when we discuss from the tenth canto. Dasamskanda of Shri Madh Bhagavatam. Now we are discussing. The third canto. So still, you know, seven more cantos to go, when we reach up to the tenth canto. In that. There are so many pastimes, wonderful pastimes. And from each pastime, we can learn. You know, what kind of lesson Krishna wants, wants to learn us from that pastime. So Krishna is a teacher. He teaches from his each activity. We need to understand that what lesson he wants us to learn from his activity. So before we conclude today's session, any other comments or any questions anybody has?
Fantastic session and the three past births also clear. And one more thing I liked was the definition for Krishna is.
Yeah, kashati jiva chittam iti Krishna. Who attacks, who attacks the consciousness of each living being. Kashati, kashati jiva chittam iti Krishna. Woh kashan karta hai, isliye uska naam hai Krishna, kashan. Haa bolie.
Sir, mera ek question tha ki, ye Ram, Ram ji jo hai, woh, matlab Nomi ko kyun hue, uske pichhe kya raaz tha? Nomi ko payda hue the na, hamare Ramchandri, to uski wajah, kuchh ho to.
Haa, haa, of course, uski, uske se kafi karen hai, main ek karen ab yehi, kyu samay kam hai, to main ek karen aapse baanta hu. I share one reason with you. See, there is very strong connection between. Durga. And Vishnu. One of the names of Durga is Vaishnavi. Right? Vaishnavi Devi, we say it right, right? People, they go for pilgrimage, Vaishnavi Devi on the mountains, right? So. Ramanomi, the ninth day of Chaitramas. So eight days are for Durga. Correct? Ashtrimi, the yakya is done for Durga. Navratri, you know, they observe the wrath of Navratri, right?
Haa ji.
So on Ashtrimi ko to yakya kar lete, they do the yakya on Ashtrimi. So that means the fasting is over on the eighth day. But there are nine forms of Durga, Navadurga, we call them, right? So broadly speaking, three forms are attributed to Mother Lakshmi, three to Parvati and three to Saraswati, like that.
Oh.
So on the ninth day, when all the nine forms of Durga are worshipped, Lord Ramachandra appears. So that is the Navratri of Chaitramas, then Navratri of Ashwanimas. When Diwali comes after that. So at that time also, after the Navadurga, Navratri, Navadurga is worshipped for nine days. People, they fast, they do different types of austerity. On the tenth day, Lord Ramachandra kill comes Ravana. Vijayadashami. Right? So see the connection between Mother Durga and Vishnu, Lord Ramachandra. So after the nine days of worship of Navadurga. Lord Ramachandra appears on the Namo Me Day. Does it answer your question? Aapke prashna ko uttar mila?
Haa ji sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question? Or any comment?
Mint, it was really.
Mint, to start, aaj ka program bho pachcha tha.
We should, we should discuss. Relationship of Krishna and Kali, because this year again. There were a lot of messages doing rounds about similarities between Krishna and Kali. What is Kali? Devi Kali. So sometimes we should discuss that. Probably today the time is not permitting us to do it.
Just very briefly, I would like, Siti, this is very, very good point. Very briefly I tell you that. Who is Kali? Who is Durga? When Krishna wanted to appear as the eighth child. Of Vasudev and Devaki. Correct? So he told. His Yogamaya. To appear. As a baby girl. Where did she appear?
In the garba of Rohini.
Sorry? No, no, no.
No, no. She was. Yasoda, Yasoda, Yasoda.
Yasoda ke ghar.
Correct.
Yes, Yasoda.
Correct, correct. So. Krishna told her to do that. And he said that Vasudev will go and he will bring her to, to Mathura. And bring Krishna to Gokul. Right? So she served Krishna in that way. So from that perspective. Durga is like Krishna's sister and Krishna blessed her. Then in Kaluga. She will be worshipped in more than ten different forms. And she will be empowered. She, Krishna empowered her that she can give bones. All material prosperity, her devotees can have. And if you see that, people who sincerely nicely worship. Mother Durga, they are very rich. They are very opulent. Because Durga has that power. As Krishna's sister, she got the power from her brother. Durga is the expansion of Yogamaya. So she has the blessings of Krishna, her brother. And because of that, because of her brother, she can bless her devotees. And they become very opulent, materially very opulent. So there is a connection between Kali and Krishna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Shafadaji, aapko kuchh kahna hai?
No, it was a wonderful session. I enjoyed all the parts. So, writing notes.
Ah.
Yeah. Because I know it's some of the questions you will be asking in next classes. But it is really wonderful. I enjoyed the session completely, many doubts cleared. And I was not knowing about the three incarnation of Lord. With Vasudev Devi earlier, that is also new thing.
Yeah.
It was a good mission. Enjoyed.
Yeah, many people, they don't know. See the thing, I know, why we are so ignorant, because we don't read. We don't read our own scriptures. I was just giving discourse on this Krishna's Janmas to me at the Iskwan Temple here in Hong Kong on Tuesday. So I just, because so many things I asked, people were not able to answer. So I was telling them, you know, if I ask a question, which is the next movie of Shahrukh Khan, Salman Khan, Amir Khan, so many people will know. And I say, you know, we waste so much time on these useless people, they are not going to help us. We waste our time, we waste our money and they become rich. And we are in difficulty, nobody is going to come to help us, right? The person who is coming to help us, Krishna, the least we know about him. The person who is coming to help us, Krishna, the least we know about him. And the people who are hopeless, who are not going to help us, more things we know about them. And we spend so much time to know about them, what is happening in their life. Right? So I said, human form of life is not to be vested on these hopeless people. Read from scriptures, so I made everybody take a vow, there were many people in the, in the temple room there on Tuesday. Say today's Janmashtami or Janmashtami Day, you make a vow, you promise to Krishna that from tomorrow. I'm, I said, you know, normally when we watch movies, movies may go for two and a half to three hours. Right? So I said, I am not going to ask you to promise that you will read from Bhagavatam. Or Bhagavad Gita for two and a half to three hours, no, I am not asking that, even twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes, ten percent of the time what you. Waste on watching movie, ten percent of that time you spend on reading from Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam. Dosiram Charit Manas or Walmiki Ramayan, you will learn so many things. And these are the things which are going to help us when we are in difficult situation. Am I saying the right thing or not?
Absolutely correct.
Absolutely right.
Yes, so many people raise their hands and they said, we promise on today's Janmashtami Day, from tomorrow onwards. Then I told them, you, tomorrow's you are saying, you specify the date, tomorrow is twenty-eighth August, two thousand twenty-four. Otherwise you say tomorrow, 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 tomorrow never comes, right? So be more specific, twenty-eighth August, two thousand twenty-four, on that day, from that day onwards, you will read twenty-five to thirty minutes from any scripture. So that will have more purifying effect on our consciousness.
Usha is raising hand, she is going to read.
Sorry. So thank you very much for everybody attending this program.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yes, and you also, you also should start reading from Bhagavad Gita, Shrimad Bhagavatam, Walmiki Ramayan, Dosiram Charit Manas, right? Okay, Hare Krishna, everybody, thank you.
Krishna, thank you.